I'd like to call this meeting of the Berlin-Boilston Regional School Committee Budget, Facilities and Safety Subcommittee to order. Okay, so tonight we're going to start out with a few guest speakers. We have both police chiefs from Berlin and Boyleston who are just going to give us a little bit of an overview on a school resource officer and why our school district might need or want an SRO. And then after the police chief's speak, there will be a public comment session. So if you want to speak, I'll go through everyone that wants to speak and let me know. You sign in, you have three minutes. And then Beth, Lisa, and I will discuss. We also want to give the admin team a chance if they have anything to say, so we'll do that after public comment. Does that work for everyone? Okay. All right, so without further ado, I don't know if I've asked before, John. You guys want to hold together now? So I don't know if you heard that, the mic is...
The volume shouldn't be an issue for that.
Volume? Me too, I'm in that booth.
So I'm John Enziad, I'm your police chief here at Boyleston. Eric Schottner, your police chief in Berlin. So a school resource officer in a small town is essentially to build on relationships, foster relationships within the community. We act as a resource for the school, for the students, and for the families as well. I know a lot of people kind of think the school resource officer, there's extremes on both sides. One is that we are Rambo at the front door, ready to take down any threat. And the other side is that we are making TikTok videos with kids dancing throughout the schools. And somewhere in between that is what the role actually is. So it's very important to know that a school resource officer should reflect the values of the school, of the community. So when we speak about a school resource officer, we're talking about very general ideas. Because again, this isn't an implemented position, so we don't know how to critique it for our community. So main focus is obviously safety and security, conflict resolution. Again, this is, we're kind of a branch of the guidance office where they can call on us or we can intervene before a situation does arise. With the criminal justice reform that took place a few years ago, it does restrict a lot of what police can do when it comes to juveniles. So I would think that the, that most police departments in Massachusetts, the preferred method when dealing with a juvenile is never arrest. There are a lot of stipulations that go in, like I said, when we do handle juveniles. So that's always a consideration. We're really there to just be that gap and to mentor people. I grew up in a community that had a very involved police department. It is definitely why I became a police officer. If you were to ever speak to my parents, I could have gone either way. So I do know the value of a school resource officer. You know, aside from the safety, safety and security, the conflict resolution, it's bringing back the, you know, the former DARE program. I think most of you would know by now that I used to teach at the elementary school, I used to teach a program targeted at the fifth grade class. It was a program called LEAD, Law Enforcement Against Drugs. The fifth grade class, we focused on the effects of tobacco and alcohol use on the developing brain. Now, was there, is there any factual data that suggests that those programs actually help, help kids stay away from alcohol, tobacco, drugs? I don't know. But what I do know is that that was a way for me to start building relationships with the students, with the faculty, with the parents. And that's, in my view, that's what the school resource officer position is. You know, and of course, you know, there's the truancy aspect, which I don't think we really have a problem in Boyleston. I would assume Berlin's the same way. But again, it's just, it's just an extension of the school to help with additional resources. Chief, do you have anything else to add?
No, I mean, basically what John said, you know, we're there to build trust within the kids and the community. You know, we're parents, we're, we all have kids who went through the school system. It's a great program, we can be aborted. But, you know, we've been very fortunate, the last, what, 20 something years, we've had an officer in Berlin Memorial School. Program's a success. I mean, I go in school, nobody knows who I am, but they all know who Sergeant Goody is. And we've been in the same town for the same amount of years. So it's a proven success in Berlin.
One thing to keep in mind with the SRO position is the, there's a considerable amount of training that goes into that position. So if the decision was made, I know it can't be made today, but if the decision was made today that we want a school resource officer in the schools, we wouldn't be looking at until next school year anyways. There's just a lot that goes into it, there's a lot on the union side that goes into it. And of course, the selection for it is fairly intense.
Yeah, I mean, the training, Sergeant Goody can tell you more about the training. It's constant. You know, what do you think you do, 60, 70 hours a year of training?
Constant. I left the 10-hour training today, well, 8-hour training today is always something. The training never stops. It's a constant understanding, working with school rules, understanding. The chief kind of touched on some things. John, restorative justice is the big program right now. School resources are the conduit with the courts on the restorative justice. I've always been a fan of prevention over apprehension, and that's been successful. There's going to be a lot of answers, questions back and forth. I can only say, I've done it 35-plus years. Somebody pointed out to me on Facebook on Halloween, I was their DARE officer or something like that. As much as we're looking at a school resource officer for the high school district, something up here, I can't stress enough, from pre-K to kindergarten, opening a go-kart, to helping tie shoes or seeing them off in a situation and assuring parents giving up their child for four or five hours in kindergarten, that I get calls from colleges for kids that want stuff. I'm a big fan of having someone in the community that is a conduit between the residents, the homes, and the school liaison sharing information. I'm against outside security consultants that have no connection whatsoever to the community. I think that's a waste of taxpayers' money. You have highly trained experts among all of us, and there's a lot of things, I could go on about the success of the program. Unfortunately, all the things I do, I can't talk about, they're private with guidance. I am a conduit to assure that student or that staff, there is assistance out there. And a law enforcement officer in a positive way makes that connection at first grade or pre-K, all the way through adulthood. And I'm embarrassed to say I've done it a long time and helped these people with marriage problems, not me, a team, working collaboration with Boyleston, police, fire, EMS, and everyone else. And the success is amazing. It's like a lighthouse, all right? I can't tell you how many we saved, but you'll jump on the ones that are crashed.
So, so one thing that just jawed my memory, I used to work for the Dudley Police Department. Dudley has a very successful school resource officer program with Shepherd Hill. And when I worked there, the SRO traditionally is always made fun of, because they just go in and hang it out at the schools all day long, until I shadowed that officer. And I realized how involved his job was and how much was reported to him that normally would not have been reported, because there was never that, there was never that bridge, there was never that trust. You know, these kids, they're not going to just pick up the phone and call the cops just to have a conversation, but when they see a cop every single day and they build up that relationship, things that otherwise would have gone unnoticed or not reported starts getting reported. And that was when my tune on school resource officers totally changed.
Sorry, I'm writing notes. Because I realized there's no easy way to minutes on these things. Okay. All right, so that was good. So is there anything else from the police chiefs? Oh yeah, of course, yeah. We can ask questions now, publicly now.
For school resource officer, is that something that you would like hire someone for that has never done it before? Or is that something that like, school resource officers look to move to different communities?
So in Boyleston, I have one officer who was shown interest, and of my staff, he would be the person I would select for, he has a personality for it. He does not have the training required for it, so he would have to be sent out for that. But that is not to say posting it as a new position, you wouldn't get someone that jumps. I think like any employee, people are looking for other opportunities, so we could very well pick up someone that is either coming from a very small school or a very large school, looking to either increase or decrease their workload, or in more reality, the collective bargaining agreements usually dictate of when people are leaving and when people are applying. So that's kind of a mixed bag answer, I guess.
Lisa, did you have any questions? No, I think we... Okay. All right, so at this time, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming, because I know you're busy and you're probably on duty, so thank you. So at this time, I think we'll jump right into public comment, and then we can talk about our thoughts and next steps, and definitely want to hear from the admin team as well. So we'll do that after the public comment. Okay, so I have three people on here. Did anyone want to make a public comment that did not sign this yet? Oh, Lindsay, okay. All right, so I'll add you on here. All right, so Katrina, do you want to start?
Can I ask?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Since this is a very informal meeting, is it necessary to put your name on the list, you know, before you speak? Because oftentimes, somebody will say something that sparks another question?
Yeah.
So are we going to be prohibited from asking a question?
Absolutely not. No. No, it's just so I know who to call on to come up, so we can keep things moving. And then I will ask again. Yes, absolutely. I will ask again if somebody has something else to say. We want to make sure we hear from everyone. That's the whole purpose of having this. Okay, perfect. So we'll start with Katrina. We'll let Katrina kick it off. All right, so the mic is up there on that table. If you want to sit right there.
Just watch your step. Just watch your step when you get up, okay?
Oh, my luck, I'll trip on video.
That's our only mic we have. Not that we'd be getting hurt, but that's our only mic we have.
For anybody who doesn't know, Katrina Lauten, I have a, let me not screw this up, seventh grader, a kindergartner, and a second grader, BES in Tejano. And tonight, I wanted to take a minute to talk about how the kids are feeling. The conversations that they're having are changing. They talk about what if a school shooting happens, or say things like, hey, so-and-so is probably going to shoot up the school. That's their reality and not ours. It wasn't like that when we were growing up, so while you might not be worried about it yourself, because you're not in the building and feeling those feelings, the kids in the building are. These are ongoing conversations among young kids. I hear it from other parents I talk to. The kids speak about it casually now, almost like it's normal, and that should be heartbreaking to all of us. It should tell us that, wait, it should tell us something, sorry. They're growing up in a world where the idea of violence at school isn't unthinkable anymore. They're anticipating it. This lingering fear chips away at their sense of safety before they even get into class. It's not drama or exaggeration, it's anxiety, and it's real. And it's what these kids are thinking and talking about daily. If you don't think it's happening, it's because they're not saying it in front of you. An SRO isn't just about reacting if God forbid something happens, it's about being proactive, having someone in the building who knows the kids, like they were talking about, who becomes familiar face, a trusted adult, that presence can open doors for kids who are struggling, being bullied, or unsafe at home. Our adult realities are worlds apart from what these kids live with today. We had the privilege of growing up without these fears, and they don't. It's a different world, and they deserve decisions that reflect that. The world our kids is growing up in is different. Anxiety, fear, mental health challenges are everywhere. Having an officer in the building isn't harmful, it's another layer of care, protection, and connection. They deserve someone watching out beyond academics. They deserve someone trained to communicate, de-escalate, and protect them. I really don't know why we're even having this conversation, to wonder if we should need one. We all know money's a big challenge, and I think we are asking that the school, district, and committee get behind this, and then we find a way. I also want, I was just, when they were all speaking, thinking, how is it fair? How are you going to tell the BES kids they don't get an officer Goody? Can anyone tell me that? Why is that fair? Why does he get the training? Why does he get to build these relationships, but we can't do it at BES and then add more to Tejano? You go tell the kids, I'm sorry, BES, your kids, you don't deserve an officer Goody. It's very frustrating as a parent.
Great, thank you. Jessica Crossland.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Crossland. I'm a Boyleston resident. I have one child at BES. I am here to advocate that we currently do not have enough information to justify adding an armed police officer to our schools. I am instead proposing that two things must happen first. One, the needs that we are looking to address must be clarified. And two, questionnaires should be distributed to district households in order to obtain accurate data on the issues. Beyond building rapport, what specific needs are we as a district trying to address? What concerns are driving this decision and this discussion? A Facebook survey is a helpful starting point, but it captures only a small slice of the community. To make a decision of this importance, we should commit to a district-wide data gathering process. A questionnaire should be sent to every household with children in the district schools in order to gather meaningful feedback about exactly what safety concerns the community wants addressed. That information should then drive how we move forward with strategies and solutions. Once that information is gathered, it should guide our next steps, whether that involves considering an SRO or identifying other intervention strategies. It is important to determine if current interventions are lacking, ineffective, or not properly implemented, or if there are safety measures that need to be shored up, updated, or replaced. Additionally, parents and caregivers should have access to a detailed overview of existing procedures to better understand how the district already protects our students. Teachers and students, especially in the middle and high school, should also have structured opportunities to share their firsthand experience and safety concerns. This process takes time, but it's time well spent. By building our decision on real feedback and data rather than fear or perception, we can craft solutions that genuinely reflect the needs of our schools, students, staff, and families. I ask the school committee to not rush adding an SRO to the budget before hearing from the community at large, before gaining a realistic view of what the specific needs and concerns are, and before exploring other possible interventions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Melissa Defonzo.
Hey, everyone. Sorry, I should have brought a much bigger notebook. I don't know what I was thinking. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Melissa Defonzo, and I am a resident of Berlin, and my children graduated in 2020, oh gosh, they're 22 and 21 years old, so they went through the Berlin school system and graduated. And I myself am a school counselor. So I have been a school counselor for the past 25 years at two different schools. My first, when I first started was at Groton Dunstable Regional High School with an SRO, and I was like, oh, this is new to me, and I just started in 2000. But it was honestly, it was great. And the role could be as small, you start small and you kind of grow. And then I now work currently since 2007 at Hudson Public Schools, so right down the street where I also went to high school and graduated from. So I can tell you, I have worked with SROs for 25-plus years, and as a school counselor, I definitely highly support it. And here's the most important thing, you'll have to excuse my little notes, but honestly, it's about building a relationship with the students and the families. So I look at our SROs where we are at Hudson, and they are an extension of us. So everything that we do is in collaboration with one another, we work together, we talk together. So, you know, if you think about like, what happens on the weekend, and one of your students comes in and they're like, oh my gosh, like, what happened? They're super upset, what went on? My SRO is there to say, this is what happened at home. There was a family altercation at home, and they're really upset. Great, that tells me what I need to do is then I email my teachers to say, Johnny's having a tough day, there was, you know, some issues at home, if you need anything or he needs a break, please let him know that he can come down to see me. So that kind of fosters that whole relationship building. And you know, I just was listening to, and I forget the woman who just spoke, and just trying to address like, the whole thing about families is that it's the complexity of it, right? If there wasn't the school resource officer who also worked for the town of Hudson that came in and told me, all these families and all these kids, they suffer in silence. You would be amazed at how much they come down and they use our school resource officers. And they're kind to them, they're an extension of us. I also want to just talk a little bit about like, and you know, I don't want to overwhelm everybody, but the role of the school resource officer in Hudson has grown over the years. And so what that looks like is, as school counselors, we go into classrooms and we deliver curriculum, and Hudson High School is grades eight through 12, and our middle school is four, four, five, and six. So we have two school resource officers at the middle and the high school. And at the high school, they're part of us, so whether they're working with the wellness teachers, and they're going in and doing a unit on substances, the school resource officer comes in and brings displays and talks to the kids. If the school counselors are doing, we do healthy relationships as one of our units, and we also do a unit on, oh, what was the other thing? I just lost my train of thought. Oh, sorry. Building healthy relationships, and there was something else, it'll come to me. But they're there as well too, to come, and, oh, online. So online, whether it's texting or whatnot, and being safe, you know, digital use, the safety of digital use. They'll come in and they'll talk to the students about that, and the implications of what happens when you put things out into the world. And does it really disappear if you put it on Snapchat? Does anybody know the answer to that? It does not disappear. So we also learn a lot too, so whatever you put out there can be found. So the other part two is what they do for us, is they come in, and we have an Alice training next week. So they'll come in, they do the Alice training with us as a staff, and they answer all of our questions that we might have about, you know, safety, how do we get out? So there's a lot of, they make us feel good about what we're doing, and we're all here to take care of our children. These are all of our children, okay? The other important thing is, you know, they do home visits. So something's going on, we haven't seen Johnny, they've been out of school all week, do you mind? Can we go stop by the house? Absolutely, they'll go and see what's going on. If they need any additional resources. Let me just see here. Our whole motto at the high school too is if you see something, say something. And I will tell you, because our school resource officers, they don't just come in, work their shift, and they leave, they're actually a part of our rallies. So Detective Chad Krogan will come in, he brings the infamous Murph with him, and he is the most beautiful English cream golden retriever. So he's always a presence in the school as well too. And Officer Costa, she's amazing. So these kids do go see our school resource officer without even telling us, which is what we want, right? Because they're an extension of us. So they do lunch duty, they'll just be in the halls, how's it going? So it's not always so formal, and it's not that they're coming into the school and they have their gun and they're standing at the front door like waiting, that's not what this is. They are an extension of us who cared very much about our kids and our community. So I think I got everything on my, and I would also say like, and I think I can say this confidently, if you ever had questions about like, how much is this going to cost? The answer is, it's priceless, right? Prices, you can't put a price on that. But what I will tell you is, you can probably reach out to the Hudson Police Department as well too, and figure out those components of the pay and whatnot. So I know that the chief De Perseo there would be willing to talk to anybody here as well. So I think that's it for me. Does anybody have any questions or? All right, thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next up, we have Lindsay Tierney.
I would, it would happen to me, for sure, without a doubt. So, good evening, I'm Lindsay Tierney. I have two children at BES. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the school resource officer. First of all, I can't agree more with what Officer Goody said, including my own personal connection with officers in the town that I grew up in. I do agree. However, my goal is to ensure we are making a decision grounded in student safety, data, fiscal responsibility, and long-term well-being. I fully support Safe Campus. I also want to be able to be sure that we're selecting a model that delivers the greatest impact for our students, including potentially a phased approach, a campus security aide, or part-time, if those are options that we're able to look into. I myself have a brother that is a school campus safety aide with de-escalation training. He was a former police officer, works for the town of Brookline. Brookline recently got rid of their SROs due to, I believe, a number of reasons, and I'm happy to help provide any information that might put some light around that. He does build relationships and supports the community, and has ample training. And I can say that it's likely that that could be a potential for another option, not necessarily the SRO and going through all of the police training. We could potentially post a position for a campus security aide with a different salary requirement, but in the job description, we could potentially put that they have the training for that. There are definitely folks out there that we could potentially get for Tejano. I also hope we can explore whether part-time or shared district options exist. I echo what Christina said, as far as BES and not having a presence there. So, my request is simple, let's just make a data-driven decision that prioritizes both the safety and student well-being. Evaluate all the models, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, now that was all the people that signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to say something?
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
Just quick.
Yes.
I've heard data a couple times. I think within our district and town, Officer Goody has the best data.
Yep.
And I don't think we should be looking at national data on this. I mean, it's working, it's building relationships. What data do we really want? That's all I'm going to say about data.
I think that is, like, that is the data that I want. You know, like as far as just having that open, having that data, understanding, you know, within the past twelve months, twenty-four months, how many incidents have we had? You know, there was an incident at BES that we spoke of with somebody on, on the campus.
That's happened multiple times.
And, and they weren't an authorized adult. You know, like having, having somebody in and present to handle those might, might help. I don't know. But I'd like to know that kind of data, like why aren't we calling the police? How is it happening?
I'm sorry, I thought you meant data, like to school resource officers.
Yeah, why don't we try?
Because that is a lot of the other side of this. And the, you know, unfortunately, the scary armed, they have a gun on them. That's not even what their goal is. It's to build relationships. And maybe, God forbid, they have to protect, need be. But that shouldn't be the first thought, is that they have a gun. Because Officer Goody has so much data, he's been doing it for so long.
I would just come closer with a microphone.
I'm done.
I'm afraid that they can't hear.
It's fine, it's fine. All right, no, thank you, no, but at least that's for us. Yeah, I will, I've been trying to. I'm trying to keep good minutes. Okay, does anyone else have anything to say? Okay. All right, perfect, so just come on up here and sorry, you have to come on up. Because I'm just worried that we're going to watch the recording and it's not here. Yeah. All right, and what is your name?
Sheri Arben. So I'm here today to offer my perspective on the addition of a school resource officer or SRO in our school district. With respect to SROs, I know that some share the opinion that it's so in our face these days that nobody can be opposed. I fear being ostracized in a small community for my opinions, but I'm at peace sharing my presumably unpopular point of view. In two thousand twenty-four, there were two fatalities by police in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This year, in two thousand twenty-five, there have been four people killed in the police, by police in the Commonwealth. As you may recall, one of these four fatalities occurred in our small town of Boylston on March fifth. Just based on sheer numbers, this is a significant event. You may remember that this event happened, but that may be where your recollection ends. You're not alone. Other than the report of an officer-involved shooting, an active crime scene, and days later, the release of the victim's name, there's been radio silence. Despite efforts by the Telegram and Gazette to gather some basic information about the shooting and subsequent investigation, scant details have been publicly shared. In fact, according to the Telegram and Gazette, in a recorded meeting of the Boylston Selectmen, the town of Boylston paid a PR firm for their work with the town administrator and the police chief in the days following this incident. The lack of transparency regarding this matter can only lead to public speculation and it certainly does not build trust between the police and the public. Building trust with the public should be of utmost priority in modern, in modern police, even in a small rural town like Boylston. Given the lack of details about the circumstances leading up to the shooting itself and the withholding of the involved officer's current work status, we can only begin to hypothesize what happened. Often our minds wander to dark places that are far from reality, but sometimes the truth is stranger than fiction. All we do know is that a twenty-five-year-old male was killed near his Boylston home and a police officer in our town took his life. Since mental health is on the forefront of national debates about gun control and policing, one might naturally wonder, was this young Boylston man experiencing a mental health crisis like so many young people today? We just don't know. I cannot imagine being able to support the addition of an SRO without first knowing what happened on that cold and eerie day back in March. Our community needs answers to be able to heal and move forward. As someone who has lived through the tumultuous life that comes from being a primary support for a loved one with ongoing mental health struggles, I can tell you that it takes an enormous physical, emotional and even financial toll on both the person suffering and the family who supports them. It requires almost endless patience, a character trait that few possess. Until you have walked that walk, it is almost impossible to comprehend. I have spent hours that amount to days and weeks in emergency room and inpatient psychiatric settings where mental health crisis is all-consuming, heartbreaking, yes, and at times scary. Not all people, even professionals in the mental health field, are equipped to handle these situations. That's a reality. De-escalation practices require stamina, patience, compassion and an abundance of understanding. These attributes are acquired through lived experience, not trainings with hypotheticals. Do police officers have the temperament and requisite exposure? Maybe, maybe not, but certainly not by virtue of their badge and weapon. I urge the school committee to think very carefully about adding an SRO position to Berlin-Boylston, especially without official word from the Worcester County District Attorney's Office regarding the march shooting of a young Boylston man by a police officer. I ask that you consider the young people within the school buildings who may be struggling with their own mental health. Challenging moments can quickly escalate to full-blown crisis when respondents are rigid, punitive or insensitive. When we view these moments through a compassionless lens, we further disconnect these students from their community and risk further disenfranchisement. We should not view an SRO's role as protecting the mentally well from the mentally ill. Children who suffer from mental illness are children with one or more disabilities. Their lives are chaotic, but they matter nonetheless. As you may know, there's no easier, quick solution to any mental illness. Even medications are literally trial and error. I strongly encourage you to think whether adding an SRO to an already hefty budget will be the quick, easy, albeit expensive, solution that others might claim it to be. Moreover, does adding an SRO really make our community safer? Or is it all an illusion of safety?
Thank you. And anyone else?
Thanks, Melissa Broder. I wasn't planning on speaking, so I'm not going to be as eloquent as everybody else. But first, I just want to say, we love Sergeant Goody. We're a big fan of him and his kettle corn. But I just, my question, I guess, is, I don't know if I can ask questions? Are you guys going to answer questions or am I just making a comment?
It depends.
Is this something that would be voted on at town meetings? Or would, is this something that's just decided and it just happens? And then in terms of that, I'm just worried about the budget because I, you know, was involved in that whole thing last year a little bit. And like, I'm, you know, I agree it's priceless, but do we know ballpark what it costs? And I just don't know where that money's going to come from. Are we going to lose other things from the school if we do go that route? When everything was so tight last year, so.
So I can, I'll answer the question about process. So the process would be, for an SRO in a regional district, I think that the first step would be to determine whose budget it would go on, right? So would it sit with the police budget which goes with town? Or what it, which means it goes to the select board, right? The select board determines your budget or they work with you to determine your budget. If it's on the school budget, the school committee votes on it. And then everything always goes to town meeting for the budget. So sometimes it's embedded, it's like an item in the budget, right? So the SRO might be an item in John's budget, it might be an item on the school's budget. And the town always votes on the budget at town meeting, whatever it is. Pass or fail, exactly, in the poll.
Yep.
So, excuse me, I did, I had my board of selectors meeting last night. I gave them a heads up that I was coming here. I made it clear to everyone, including my board, that I could never accept the position unless it was fully funded in my budget. I know the school committee and the superintendent's office, they're very supportive of the school resource officer. But looking at the future, if there were leadership changes that did not support it, then who's paying for my officer or am I laying someone off? So I, I, and that is kind of a stipulation with the school resource officer, is I could never provide one unless it was in the police department budget. And just for clarity on that, so it's just not in Boylston, right? So if you're looking at an officer, school resource officer at Tonto, it would affect both communities. So both towns would have to vote on that and both towns would have to support that and pass that.
It could be, it would be, it would start on John's budget and then John, the police would send the school district a bill. And the school district would have to pay that bill. So that bill would be on the school's budget, so it would start in John's budget. It would also end up in the school's budget. It wouldn't be double counted, it would be John would put in his budget, the total. And then, you know, as a revenue, whatever, you know, he's going to build a school department. The school department is going to pay based on the share of Tonto, BES, you know, for that. And then, so Berlin would have a sliver of that or whatever that percentage would be. I would defer that to our, our numbers guy to figure that out.
I would think of, so, so our budget is basically at its core, a big pie, right? If you are going to add a slice to an existing pie, and that, whether that slice is sitting with the police department or wherever, another slice is going to have to get smaller unless you get a bigger pie. So we have a number of people here who are in support of it. If you truly want this, I encourage you, be it FinCon meetings, be it town meetings, be it select board meetings where the budget is being discussed, because something is going to have to go to make this happen. Again, I'm not speaking against it, I'm just saying a budget is a give and take. The pie doesn't get bigger by saying, we want this. The pie gets bigger by the towns voting. The school committee will vote the budget, but at the end of the day, if the budget fails at town meeting, then we have a whole series of additional processes to go through that get more and more onerous as we go. So again, I fully am supportive of it as Al said. But I think we need to have hard conversations about what the town is realistically going to fund and how big the pie is going to be.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Can I say a comment about that?
Yes. Yeah, because you know, it's.
I think that just directs back to what I was saying. Like, if we are going to lose something from our schools in order to gain this, isn't it important that we have input from our school community, from our district, having a way for parents to easily vote or easily cast their opinion? Not everyone can come to a five o'clock meeting. Not everyone can come to a seven-thirty meeting, whatever time it is. People have other things that are also important. So making it as easy as possible for people to vote on, yes, I really want this, but if it means I'm losing X, Y and Z, then maybe that's not the direction we go. Maybe we look into finding a social worker that can come in and do all the things that the police officers are saying that they can do. Why don't we find a different, like, one of the other speakers was talking about finding a different way of providing the intervention if that's what we're saying we need. Because if we're going to lose something else, and we already know there are other things taking money from the town budget, from the school budget, it has to be a decision that the community can live with and the community is willing to give up in order to get something else. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so before, wait, because I want the admin team to weigh in because some important questions were raised and it's five forty-eight. So does anyone from the public want to bring up a new comment? We're not going to really do a dialogue back and forth. We don't really do that at school committee meetings. So I really want the admin team to have time to say their piece, if they want to say anything on this topic. And then I want us to kind of talk about amongst ourselves what the next steps are going to be so people can know what comes next, since we've all spent our time coming and voicing our opinions.
Something, and just a couple of things first. So I appreciate everyone's comments and I, I also appreciate data, right? When you're talking about data, we have one aspect of data, there's a lot of aspects. Even this room alone, you heard a couple of different opposing views. One of the things that Lisa and I have been working on with Renee and with the school committee is a strategic plan. And we're getting a survey that will be going out that we have been vetting and working on now for the last couple of weeks, it'll be ready to go out next week. And one of the questions on there is about school resource officer. So here's our chance to get a lot of data about a lot of different things that we hear a lot about, right? People saying, we're hearing this, we're hearing that. So here's a chance, it's, I think it's about a hundred, like a question maybe survey when it's all done. But it's based on whether you're looking at it as a student, whether you're taking the survey as a parent, whether you're taking the survey as a community member, as an administrator, at all aspects of our community. We've worked really hard to get that survey together. We're actually testing it right now to make sure that there's no glitches in there. We're going to send out to everyone in our community, not just our families, but also people that are taxpayers that also are going to be paying for this as well too. What is their take on that? How are they feeling about that? That's good data, that's rich data, that's a lot of data, it's not just one data point. We're going to have data points from students, parents, community members, administrators. We're going to get it from everyone in our community. That will be good data. One of the questions we're going to guarantee will be on there is about school resource officer. Another big conversation we're talking about is culture, that will be on there. One of the things about school cell phones, that will be on there. Everything that we've been hearing so far, that we're hearing people are feeling strongly about in little pockets, we're putting it out there to get service from everybody. So we encourage you all, when that survey goes up, to please, we're going to post that everywhere, give us that information, and that will be good data for us to have with that. The other thing, I know that our administrative team has put out a letter out that I know I shared with school committee and we put it on the district website underneath that. We're in support, we cherish the relationship we have with our police officers. Rich Cameron, our school safety liaison that works so closely with both towns and both police. Lisa, our principal, we're very proud of the relationships we have with them as well too. But a clearing thing, a clear thing that we need to make sure of, as important as this is, and we believe in the importance of our relationships with them, we also made some cuts last year in that district, right? I heard it from school committee as well too. We made some cuts at both levels of the high school. So those are things we need to take into account. Because we're also hearing on the other side from school committee, why are students leaving? Why are we leaving? And that's one of the questions we're asking in our survey as well too, why, why are you leaving? But at the same time, we're making some cuts here. So we need to say what, what, what we want to do. We've talked into both town meetings, they say, okay, what else, what else are you adding on? Or what else are you going to take off or making these decisions as well too? So I just, you know, they have a great statement they put out, a letter that they've sent to school committee and as well they put out on the district website. There are other things that have been cut first, we want us to make sure we're taking a look at that before we add additional things on as well too. Again, we couldn't be more happy and cherish the relationships we have with our police force. We call them and they're here within a matter of seconds, so we value that and just want to make sure we know that. I do, certainly Lisa or Rich, if you'd like to join us up here, please feel free to.
So I think both, both Rich and I will, will speak. I think, I know that I'd like to, as Al mentioned, we give a write a statement, so I'd like to share that because I don't know, we all know that not everybody takes advantage of.
And I got some hot copies of it as well.
Right, not everybody always takes advantage of reading through material, you know, in a, placed in a public space. So our statement reads, "At this time, the administrative team at Tonto Regional Middle High School feels that our school is well-supported by local safety officials in our current structure. Both the Berlin and Boylston Police and Fire Departments have consistently demonstrated their availability and responsiveness, whether in person or by phone, whenever their assistance has been needed. The few occasions in which we have required their support have primarily involved behavioral situations, not safety emergencies. Our local departments have provided outstanding collaboration in developing and refining our safety protocols, participating in our emergency drills and ensuring we maintain a safe and secure environment for our students and staff. Safety within our building is upheld through multiple proactive measures, including secured entrances, established entry protocols and a strong administrative presence throughout the building each day. We believe these systems, combined with the steady support of our local safety partners, have been effective in maintaining a secure school environment. While we deeply value the role that a school resource officer play in some districts, at Tonto, we do not see an immediate or critical need for this position. Officers Goody's quarterly visits already provide positive engagement opportunities for our students, fostering healthy relationships and reinforcing safety awareness. Additionally, police details are assigned to all large-scale events, ensuring that the safety of our community during those times. From a fiscal perspective, the Tonto administration must also acknowledge current budget realities. Last year, we were forced to eliminate two full-time teaching positions, which directly impacted course offerings and academic opportunities for students in grades six through twelve. Given this, we do not believe that funding an SRO when our safety needs are already being met would be the best use of limited financial resources. Restoring those teaching positions would provide a far greater benefit to student learning, the overall school experience. Please know that the safety and well-being of our students, staff and the entire Tonto community remains our highest priority. However, based on our current experience, structure and partnerships, we believe our resources would be better directed toward academic support and enrichment for our students." And I know that Rich would like to.
That's so much more well-putted. In terms of stressing, really looking at the big picture. But, I mean, really, I want to say in terms of for our school district, safety is always number one. And I can't explain how great our relationship is with our local first responders and everything that they do with us. There's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes. I know we have an upcoming school committee meeting where we're going to be going over a lot of details in terms of just all the work that's been done over the last years. But our first responders are a phone call away at all times. With that being said, I truly, and we truly, we believe in SROs. We understand differing opinions. But the impact, I mean, you look in terms of what Goody has done over the years and what he brings to Berlin is phenomenal. He steps in this building, he's the mayor. The kids gather around him and they swarm in and there is...
That seems contradictory, what he has stated that he just said. All right, yeah, if you can't interrupt someone, it's okay.
But this is the piece. We understand the impact of what an SRO brings. And there are tremendous pieces that bring to those pieces too. In terms of looking as a whole, as we collaborate with, there's a lot of pieces that happen behind the scenes too that are built in for these pieces. And when we look at, in terms of our entire budget issues and needs as a whole, you know, I come from working, you know, looking over, overseeing alternative schools over Worcester. And I worked during the era where they had SROs in every single building. And I was there during the time when we transitioned over to liaisons and exactly what that looked like and the impact of how those shifts and changes affected overall operation. And I will say, in terms of the big picture piece of how we operate and how our relationship is, is the reality is, if anything is ever needed, they really are a phone call away. We work in a liaison capacity here. This is something that may not be known and well out. I have, both John is always a phone call away from me here at Tonto. I'm constantly emailing with, you know, Eric as well. And when we take a look at Matt Ryle, who's been a great point person for us, he has worked with us on anything that's ever been needed in terms of problem solve type situation. But the reality is, for here in Tonto, a lot of our issues are more, they're not more on the level of terms of safety and more often, more behavioral pieces that we're kind of working through. I mean, we took a look at data in terms of phone calls made this year for police officers needed assistance is zero. All right? So while I stand by that, I know the impact that we've had for SROs and what they can bring in terms of community, we backfill it in other ways. You know, we have our counselors going to students' houses. All right, in the morning, they can't get up. We've built truancy programs.
I've gone to students' houses.
We meet these needs in other ways. And when we take a look and we address the big picture stuff in terms of like, looking at all the different needs for our students. So what we're trying to bring here to Tonto in the big piece, the needs when it comes to safety on the floor of the day-to-day for here at Tonto, it makes it very hard to justify the budget constraints that we've faced in recent years of being able to have teachers in the building and run classes for students and have these other opportunities that are provided for our kids. I brought up the same topic to our student advisory council. We meet with our students, we talk to this about our students. And, you know, the feedback that we get back from them in terms of their concerns is, you know, taking a look at, what about more counselors in the counseling office for mental health pieces? I think there's been some great topics that have been brought up tonight, some great suggestions in terms of like, where is, where do we get our best bang for buck? How do we best support our community specifically to address a lot of these concerns? And how do we make sure that all kids feel safe? Because that is number one, come in this building, every kid feeling safe coming into this building. And we work very digital, digital, ah, man, digitally. Thank you very much for getting that point of the night to make sure that these practices are put in place. And I agree, there's a lot of stuff to come that is gonna be important to kind of drive that, those pieces for decision-making.
And then the other thing, we're having a school committee meeting on Monday of next week, like Rich said. But appreciate that's an executive session, right? So we're gonna share with our school committee the safety things that we have in place, all the things that we've put in place. There are some weaknesses still that we're working on, right? And there are things that we're gonna get better at that we're working with our safety liaison, we're working on police department. But not everybody's gonna know all this information, right? Because that's not what we want to do. You know, if we're sharing that information, these are our strengths, these are our weaknesses, there's other people in this community that might be looking at that in a different way. And that's why we share all that during the executive session. Like, these are the things that we put in place. These are the new cameras that we put in place. These are where they're located. You might not even be seen, right? But we know that where they're taking place. And we don't wanna share that with our entire community. But as Rich said, as we all believe, our number one thing is safety. And that's why we make sure we put this in an executive session so that we're not sharing this out with the entire community. But know that those things are constantly a conversation we're having and adding to our, our school district as well too. The other part, I just want you to appreciate what the chief said. You know, looking around this table right here at this time, at any point, you know, people are gonna go off school committee, gonna have a new superintendent, you might have new principals as time changes. The most important thing is you look at even the city of Worcester or other communities around us. Sometimes you have SRO officers, and I was part of Worcester when they had it, and then they moved, right? New school committee came aboard, a new chief, new superintendent came aboard. That felt differently. And appreciate what the chief said. That's why they really want it on the town's budget, right? So that it's guaranteed, if you're gonna put someone in this position, year after year, it's guaranteed it's gonna be there. And if it doesn't come to the table, just like Lisa's saying now, okay, what are you taking off the plate? What are you taking out of the pie, right? But if it's on the town's budget, which really is all our budget, right? That's a different conversation. So I just, I just wanna make sure the importance of it that the chief said about that as well too.
Great. All right, so, I know, did you wanna say something?
Oh, I just wanted to make a quick comment.
All right, one comment.
And maybe a simple question. I mean, I agree with Mr. Carrera. The budget process last year angered me. Losing two positions and that. I was beside myself. But I guess the question is, if money were not an issue, would your statement remain the same?
If money were not, I believe, I believe in the role. I believe in that community support. But I also believe that when we have it, the money, we, I would be irresponsible to my students if I were to say anything different than my statement right now.
Okay, so what I'm taking from that is you oppose an SRO, which is fine, I'm not making, which is fine, but...
The funding one, yes.
Well, the funding from the school standpoint or from the town standpoint?
Well, from what I understand from what Aaron said is that we would get built, so something would have to come off out of my pie. So something was gonna have to come out. So it doesn't matter what would happen. Something's gonna come out of my pie. My, and two big chunks have been taken from my pie.
Oh, I get that, I guess I get...
Unless the town decides to fund it, and that would have nothing to do with the schools. If the town decides, they're gonna fund it, and they're gonna fund it, they're gonna fund it through the school, it would have to go through the school. But you got two towns here, so it gets kind of complicated.
If they're gonna fund it without cutting it from the school budget, I mean, so again, you're the school pie and then you're the town pie. The town's pie is only so big. And something's gonna give. If they give us the money through the police department for the SRO, they're going to take it from our budget.
So the communities around us, Clinton, Shrewsbury, and Westboro, it's funded through the police department?
Yeah.
They don't build, they don't build a school? They don't do anything? It is a hundred percent through the police department, period?
And that's what I think the chief is saying. He really wants to build from the school budget here. He wants to go through the town.
It's not gonna affect the school budget, that's fine by me. But it will. I can promise you, towns only got so much money.
You would need both towns to buy into that. So, the...
And I guess that's what I'm asking is, if both towns bought into it with no effect on the budget...
No effect on our budget, it's gonna affect the taxpayers.
I get that. If the taxpayers wanted and ordered for it, would the administration and the schools oppose it?
No, no, I mean, what, the model that they have in Hudson, that type, sometimes, that sounds wonderful. That sounds like a beautiful thing. It does, it sounds wonderful. But I do think that sometimes in the course of a school day, I can't imagine how they would integrate right now into the school because we're providing some of that. Like, I can, you know, I can call Goody, I can call, you know, John, I can call anybody and say, hey, this is... But would I like that extra support for our students? I mean, we'd be crazy not to say that there would be. But if it's affecting my pie, I can't support it.
Agreed, agreed.
And just appreciate Aaron was saying that the big pie is the towns, right? So they're gonna say, okay, if you're giving the school a little, you know, we're using this whole pie thing, but if they're giving us a bigger slice here, what are they taking off in the other towns? Are they cutting, making some cuts at the fire, at the chief, at the police, all the way around? So it's all of that pieces that they need to look at as well too.
Can we take like a second and clarify with Chief Shartner?
Yes.
How it works with B M S? I think that would be helpful. And then how that could translate to maybe B E S alone? And maybe, is there a way to model like parity there without the Tonto piece?
So, yeah, so our budget covers Sergeant Goody. But remember, this has been a, I said twenty-five years, but around thirty, we've had it around so long that thirty-two years. This is a thirty-two-year transition. This is not a start tomorrow. If B M S came and said, we need Sergeant Goody, you know, five hours a day, Monday through Friday, a hundred and eighty-three days a year, the dynamics would definitely change. Right now, he's on patrol, gets a little bit of overtime out of it. But he's on patrol under our tax laws, but his primary focus is the road, not the school. So if he's at the school, his radio's still on. He leaves his camera usually in his car, but his radio's still on and he's ready to go and back us up. So it's not considered a hundred percent dedication to B M S. But, you know, we afford him every opportunity. You know, anytime Mr. Campbell calls or any of the staff calls, like, we will, you know, obviously authorize him to do it. So it's, he's not a dedicated SRO, but he is. And his position also falls under our post standards too. He's also certified in our post, he's Officer State Training Commission as an SRO. So that's a whole nother aspect. Like, I can't go in and take care of, like, if he's on vacation, I technically can't go in and take over his role because I am not post-certified to do that. So, yeah, there's a lot of logistics behind it. It's not easy. It's just easier for us because it's been a thirty-two-year transition.
So the town pays for his training? Annual training he goes to? The town is paying for his hours and all that for the training?
Yeah.
Yeah, which is, which is not easy. It's not easy on him. You know, your trainings are February vacation, April vacation, end of school, you know, so like if you have an officer that has kids in the school system, you have to find an officer that says, oh yeah, I'm not taking my family on February vacation because I need to be in the five-a-class in Reddell the whole week. Same thing, April vacation, they also push classes too. The end of school, like usually, you know, Rick told me like, there's a plastic tape again in August. And then again, like today, November, they pull classes too. But, yeah, there's a lot behind it. Fortunately, a lot of our weeks on duty, we don't backfill the shifts. Fortunately, I have that ability with our union contract. We don't have to backfill the shifts. But, yeah, there's a lot to it. We're not there by accident, but we got it, we eased it. But to start tomorrow, you know, you're looking at a six, over-six-figure price tag. You know, if you came to us tomorrow and said, we need an SRO, say, okay, we'll deposit a hundred thousand and we'll see how far it gets us. You know, it's not cheap.
Just wanted to briefly say, I did move from Hudson to Boylston and their town budget is roughly ten million more than what our two towns combined is. So you're looking at comparing a town that has significantly more resources, more revenue, more businesses in town to support that. So, I mean, that's just, I fully agree, I think it's a losing, but... I don't know if that's a consideration at all.
I respect your question, but it really does come down to money, right? Like, you're being...
Of course, I mean, ultimately, I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer.
Sure, everyone wants to drive a Cadillac racing sometime.
But for the money, would we even be having this discussion, right? So, a quick question. If Boylston decided to fund this project entirely under the Borison Police Department's budget, would that eliminate offers of goodies?
No, we would, so the Boylston officer would just be involved in the schools and Boylston. And then same thing, Berlin, the Berlin officer would just be Berlin.
Yeah, and then the two of them can come here. Like, we never denied him coming over.
The interesting part is, there's an MOU right through this pop education for SRO offices. The model that we have in Berlin doesn't exist anywhere in the state of Massachusetts. It's the most, it's the only, it's the only model out there, right? We have really strict guidelines of what an MOU should look like for an SRO stuff. Sorry, we keep using all those acronyms, but really is that way. The model we have here, nowhere else in the state is this model.
Starred line, so like the perfect situation.
Yeah, it really is. It's like, it's an unbelievable concept that we have here. And we thank Goody and Berlin for it, but there's nowhere else. I'm looking at the MOU now for, like, it is a fifteen-page document of what an MOU should look like. When you have a school resource officer, it's gotta be signed by school committee, superintendent, chief of police, towns, right? That are really strategic on what it looks like. We're very fortunate with what's happening in Berlin right now.
And in Boylston, we used to have similar setup to what Berlin used to. And then just, where just resources get pulled. So we can't commit, it used to be, we just can't commit the time, unfortunately, like Berlin does. You know, unfortunately, it's just a sad reality. But yeah, we make ourselves present when needed and when we can, but through all of them.
Phone call away.
So Al, one more quick question and then we're gonna talk amongst ourselves and then kind of wrap this up. So, does the school department pay Berlin, or, sorry. Yeah, does the school department pay Berlin when Goody comes quarterly to Tonto? He just does that?
Can I answer that question real quick and be very clear? This is a budget question. I am a police officer.
For the town of Berlin?
For the town of Berlin and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I can affect any law anywhere, under the direction of our chief, working through cooperation with John in Boylston. If I see a crime, I have to respond to it. My office, we call, is the school. Whether I hang out at the station, the school, senior nineteen car to the general store, I'm on duty. We walk a fine line to not offend our union. So I'm on duty, I can leave at any time. We walk a fine line to not offend our union, so I'm on duty and I can leave at any time, we have a unique position. When I do the DARE class, and we try to schedule it because it's very important for the structure and the learning time, to have someone cover me, but I spend as much time as I can there. There is elected officials that complain when I'm there too much, and the chief has to tell them, that's his job, but I could be at the mall, I could be Cabela's, Market Basket, but I primarily focus with the grace of the chief and the rest of the staff on the school, and spend a lot of time there, but I can leave and respond to calls. So there's not a cost, it doesn't cost them to come here. If you need extra help in a major situation in Boylston, we don't bill you, we work together, that's what it is. We're in a unique position, but we have to walk a fine line, we don't violate the union codes. What we're doing is a little different, as if a history teacher was out tomorrow, would you as the principal fill in? Probably not. I do. I answer calls, I investigate crimes, but I also handle things as a liaison for both schools in cooperation. So we've been able to keep it at a minimum cost, as we pay overtime to officers that are specialty in drug work, firearms, and things like that. We've had this concept for 30 years. The memorandum of understanding, the superintendent has a very good one with the DA's office, it's top-notch. Even though you may have somebody that wants to do this position, I'm not holding myself any higher, there are some moral checks, we all watch the news, this isn't for everyone. As I go out to pasture, I'm going to be a big influence on who we choose, and it's not just going to be somebody that wants the job. You know, we're all human, so it's a very, very strict position. I was in class all day with a Hudson officer, top-notch. This is a passionate position with higher standards than any other police officer in our department, we're around the youth. So it's a very tricky situation, but I want to be clear, we do it in a unique position, you're putting us in kind of a strange position to ask John how he operates his department, we're two different agencies. So remember that, we're taking it into consideration. But the biggest note I wrote down, listening to this this year, last year, and the year before, you still haven't clarified, what's the job to be done? Understanding the job for which the people hire a product or service helps innovators more accurately develop products that align with what people want accomplished. That's where you have to take all your data, school and town, and put this together before you're making decisions. Because I'm hearing mixed messages, all right? All very passionate, very good. Your first statement, I'm sitting here on my hands going, did they get help to that 12-year-old boy? You know, did that get attention? Our security, in my 41 years of doing this and helping thousands of people, I've never had to use my gun once, so don't worry about the gun situation, but it's there. Couple other comments about people that aren't trained as much, the schools, it just, everybody has a common theme here, obviously money, I'm saying, we don't look at money, we're going to provide a service. But I know there's going to come a time where I can't have as much flexibility, or the new officer won't because of budget costs. And I will tell you, I support your letter, I support your passion about SRO, I'm about education, prevention over apprehension, I get the hell beat out of me when I go back in front of our fire, police, and other town officials saying, what's the school taking now, Goody? You know, and we're all on the same page here. How do we make this a better community in a conduit to get that boy you talked about help? And that's building trust, and we're doing the best we can now. If we can come up with a solution for funding to help John, Eric, and all this, that's a perfect world. How do we get there? What is the job? And that's first and foremost, in my eyes.
Okay, this is good, thank you. All right. Okay, so we've heard a lot tonight. Do you guys have anything to say? We haven't really, do you have anything to say?
I think what Jessica was saying about getting the information, and what Officer Goody was just saying, oh, getting the information, we don't have the information, we don't have a description. We've taken the first step where we're prepping this strategic plan survey, we have gotten feedback from the community in this avenue, I'd say we get the feedback from the survey, and then that's step one.
Yep.
And then, I, we are not ready to make any kind of a formal recommendation for this year's budget. It's front of mind, I think we've all acknowledged, in a perfect world, we would like this, but from a financial perspective, we are not there yet to make that big of an ask without the data, not the data, without the full community input and a really firm description of what we're looking for.
Okay. Okay. Do you have anything to say, Lisa?
No, I mean, everybody made really good points, you know, like, I came in here, like, I'm really supportive of a school resource officer, but I do really understand the questions and the concerns about it. And so I do think, yeah, you know, learning more, hearing more about all of that is going to be really valuable, and also understanding, you know, if we do need to take it out of our budget, what we would be letting go of, you know, what we would have to, and that would be a huge part of the decision.
And I think what someone said, like, five o'clock on a Thursday, sorry about that, is tough for some people to be able to come and give us their feedback, doing the survey and getting input from everyone in our community, so this way everyone has an opportunity to give us their feedback on this.
The whole town, it's not just the parents, it's everything.
Because it's going to affect both towns, right? It's all the taxpayers, anyone that's part of this community. And also, we're even reaching out in the survey to our alumni as well too, we're going to get feedback from them as well too. So we're really doing a comprehensive reach out to our community to get some information on a lot of different subjects, so that we'll be able to share that out.
All right.
I don't think there's any scenario where this goes forward if a piece of your pie has to be cut. I can't imagine that happening in either town.
So, so, I, thank you. I think that, I agree with Lisa and Beth, there were a lot of great comments tonight. I'm thrilled that you guys have added that part of the survey and to your survey for the district improvement plan. I respect the school's position, I know, we've been living, I've been living this budget four or five years now, like, I feel your pain. As a parent of children that go to Boylston Elementary School, and hearing about all the great things that Officer Goody does, I can empathize and relate to the parents in Boylston that are saying, hey, this is not fair, this is not equity, how come we don't have a DARE program at BES? How come we don't? So, you know, it sounds like that's something with the town, so happy to work with you offline, John, and maybe help advocate. Not, I know, I understand the money is tight, not trying to push for that, but would love to have, you know, even if it's a couple hours a month of someone at BES that's qualified to, and maybe that's a start, maybe, you know, I love, somebody said, I can't remember who, the phased approach. You know, I think if this community is going to get an SRO, that's a great starting point for us.
A small foothold in to show the value, and then you keep pushing it.
Yes, yeah, and a small upfront, you know, something, start small, you know, Chief Shartner mentioned, it was 30 years in the making, 35 years in the making, so, you know, maybe we're not going to come up with whatever cost, I think, if I remember correctly, $2, $300,000 back in 2024, we talked about, like you said, the upfront cost, you need a vehicle, you need training, you've got to get a full-time person, maybe we don't start that way, maybe we figure out some type of compromise to start small and move forward with that, so.
I think it's a great conversation to be having with the town of Boylston as well, right? And make sure involving April in the select board and the FICOM and all of that.
Absolutely.
That's a huge piece of that, because we're going to them for our budget, right? And they're, so I think that's a huge conversation we need to have with them.
And they have a better idea of all of the other things that the town needs, but I think this is an awesome start, I really appreciate everyone coming out, I felt like this was a really productive use of time, we heard from a lot of people, it's all recorded, we'll take this back to the school, I'll take this back to the school committee, we'll summarize it. Like Al said, we've got an executive session with Rich discussing security next week, right? Is it Monday? Okay, great. And then, you know, we have the survey coming up, so more will come on this, but I think for now, we have to wait and see how the survey comes out and see what the town, what the town has to say, if we can even just take a little baby step this year, if there's even a teeny tiny bit of wiggle room to do something. Is there anything else?
Thank you, Jesus.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time, we really, really appreciate it, and definitely we'll be in touch.
And thank you for what you do.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, your work.
All right, so could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Are you all in favor?